Okay, one more meeting. Call order, the July 16, 2013 meeting of Glendale City Council and Glendale Successor Agency. We will call for the City Council.
Council members, Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Caro.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Chair Weaver.
Here, and for the Successor Agency.
Board members, Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Caro.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Chair Weaver.
Here, and we have your report.
The agenda for the July 16, 2013, joint public meeting of the City Council and Successor Agency was posted on Thursday, July 11, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item one is Director of Libraries, Arts and Culture, Economic Development, and Acting Director of Public Works. This was continued from July 9, 2013, regarding financing options for a central library rehabilitation project. One is council motion providing direction to staff regarding preferred funding strategy.
Okay, this is one where three of us heard the story, and now five of us get to hear the story. Do that, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. As you indicate, we, last month, had brought some of this information regarding this momentous project back to the council with three members in attendance at that point, and received a diverse spectrum of feedback. We took that direction, as it were, and eliminated some of the options that seemed, some of the funding options, that seemed to be outside of the realm of what the council was willing and wanting to do. In narrowing down that scope of options and providing more detail pursuant to council direction, Mr. Lanza-Fame has prepared a presentation ably assisted by Ms. Cleary, and we will provide you with that feedback to get your direction as to whether or not this project moves forward at this point in time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and Successor Agency, we did talk to you, at least three of you, on June 18, where we reviewed the scope of the project. We're doing some exterior improvements, reorienting the library, reorganizing the inside to take care, to take advantage of, of some offering additional community space. We're upgrading systems, mechanical, plumbing, electrical. We're, as we said, we're looking at some new areas for programming, and then there are both structural and seismic upgrades that we would like to include in the project. We had done a master plan for the area. The library has done a vision plan for the library. This project starts to address many of the findings from those two studies. The urban design, we have better relationship to the rest of downtown. We create that traditional campus spine north, south, and east-west. There are modifications to support services that the library wants to take advantage of and extend themselves and grow, modernize technology, provide some accessibility, and then improve the organization of the services within the library. I should also note that the design looked at historic preservation and made sure to only propose those things that would maintain future eligibility. This is a rendering that you've seen before of the north side, would be the new north side entrance off of Harvard. This would be at the Terminus of Maryland in our art and entertainment district. This is a view looking south of the reoriented grand, great room, great reading room, where you see the stairs relocated over to the east side. There's an elevator for ADA accessibility to the second level. These all become community space, and the administrative offices get moved to more of a back-office location of the library. When we originally proposed this, we had five different options. They combined different funding sources, New Market Tax Credits, several of them, as you see where it says GF Reserve. They took into account a borrowing from the general fund of some sort in combination with other, other taxing, or other revenue sources. The input that we got from the three members that were here gave us a lot of direction. First, and I would say even when we briefed the others, there was unanimous support for the library. Nobody's saying, "I don't like the library, we shouldn't do this." And we wanted to make sure that the community was aware of the council's support to improve services. The second that came through that was a majority of the, not a majority, unanimous of the three that were here, don't take funds from other funds or projects. We had talked about perhaps substituting gas funds. Those should be, the direction was, those should be left intact to, to use throughout the city on street maintenance. Likewise, the Paseo and parking lot 10, don't, don't reduce the scope of those projects to try and do this. You asked us to go back and look for some value engineering opportunities. We have done that, knowing that this, that we were pushing the budget on this. We did go back, and we found, as we'd said before, many of these elements work together, and so if you take out one, the house of cards falls down, and it's almost not worth doing. You asked us to go back and think about a community contribution, either through a parcel tax or a general obligation bond, and we have done that. We've given it some thought, and we'll have some information for you later. And then, the council was split on use of general fund as a resource. Two of the participating members of the council said, "No, the policy is in place. We don't think it's a good idea to use the general fund reserve." One council member said, "Yes, I'm willing to use that general reserve as long as there is a method to repay that and replenish those funds." So with that preliminary input that we took away, we have narrowed, or actually, Mr. Ochoa said, we took out, withdrew several of the options. Option two and four both use gas tax. In addition, option four, reduce the scale of the Paseo and the parking lot. So we withdrew those as options. As we looked into the New Market Tax Credits, where the costs were occurring on the project, we found that we would have to rely too heavily, even more heavily than staff was prepared to recommend to you, to take advantage of the New Market Tax Credits. So we have withdrawn that as well.
I think that that needs to be underscored just a bit. The idea of getting quote-unquote "free money" through the New Market Tax Credit Program, because it restricted our ability to use the existing and available tax-exempt bond proceeds that we have at our disposal, we could not use those. We ironically would have to put a greater strain on some internal borrowing, and thus, even though we'd be effectively leaving that $5 million estimated on the table, again, we just could not recommend that to you in good conscience based on the feedback that was received from council.
So that leaves us with basically three options. It's postpone, a combination of general fund and bonds, or asking the community for a contribution and bonds. We'll walk through all of those. In the first instance, either postpone or cancel the project, this was the idea being, wait until we can secure funding for this that doesn't dip into our general fund, and wait till we've secured that, whether it be grant, there's a decision on the 2011 bonds, or however else it might come about. In this option, staff would recommend that we do the seismic upgrade. It's $2.75 million. We could use the bond proceeds for that, but, I'm looking at my cohorts, though, okay. That's something we may want to think about, depending on how long we cancel the project. Some of the benefits of it, obviously avoids the need for an internal borrowing. It does wait for secured funding to, to be in hand. The other projects and funds are unaffected by this, this strategy. Some of the downside to it, it postpones the benefits that come with this project that improve library services. In delaying the project, we will experience increased materials and labor costs driving up the cost of the project. Funding option B is a combination of using the 2010 bonds, $10 million, and the balance from an internal borrowing from the city. That would either be the general fund reserve or some other enterprise fund that is healthy enough to support a $5 million, a $5 million loan. I think the key element here, and staff wouldn't recommend this unless this was included, is the strategy to repay this or replenish the fund. That must be in place, and the discipline given to the project to make sure that those monies are returned. The way that we would do this is through the 2011 bonds. If the legislature allowed us to use them, we could make a single payment and repay the, the internal borrowing, whether it be the general fund or an enterprise fund. If that isn't the case, the City Council can make the decision to use bond proceeds to pay the debt service. That means we don't have to take property tax that was flowing to the redevelopment agency for that debt service. When you look at the savings on that, it results in about $735,000 that would come back to the city of Glendale, just in, in our share of debt service that wouldn't be, now being paid by property tax.
And that is net new revenue back to the city? Not something that is already being counted on at this point in time?
Correct.
I have a comment. When we were here last time, albeit with a reduced number of council, taking any money from the general reserve was rejected. Why is that back before us as an option? I, you know, I'm not sure this was a, you know, why is that still up there if that was a clear, and even in your findings, that that was a, an, you know, a clear statement of those that were here? So I think bringing it back again with a new shuffle of council members, and I haven't spoken to my colleagues, I don't think that's very fair, and I'm not sure, unless there's a motion to reconsider, that that be brought back again. I mean, that was...
Well, the other alternative, too, would also be to look at one of the enterprise funds, as Mr. Lanza-Fame had indicated. If general fund was not available, would there be some other way to do it? And given some of the, the direction that was received in terms of wanting to move forward sooner than later, if not now, with the project, there's only so many ways to go forward.
Well, you have the same question as Mr. Najarian. I should make a decision.
Well, let me add, though, I personally haven't closed a door on any option. As far as I'm concerned, I'm going to listen to the presentation and then make the decision.
I understand that. I appreciate that.
Yeah, we understand that.
But it was a, with the meeting giving direction, it was a two-to-one that we not go through the general fund, and it's, it's admitted that we would not also go for...
If you're asking me, procedurally, Councilwoman Najarian, I, again, there was discussion, and you're correct, two of you did not want to do this option, and Mr. Caro did leave the door open, but there was no motion. So given that, that, you know, in my view, that the issue hadn't been closed because there's no motion, there was no vote on, on the particular matter, and, and Mr. Caro had, had, he indicated where he was, I mean, he can speak for himself, but he kind of indicated the concerns he had, but that's the reason why, frankly, it was brought back, so, so that staff could get the full council input on the particular matter.
But why did we go through the whole meeting and have any discussion at all if at the end there was no motion? Comments of Mr. Weaver and myself, as well as our time in discussing this and sitting down, basically being set aside.
Well, I disagree, and frankly, I think the staff was pretty clear that this was going to be coming back in a couple weeks, based on the discussion that had been, the discussion that the council had, when we had that discussion two weeks ago, that we wanted to get the full, the full advice of the entire council on these particular issues.
I guess we'll have to agree not to, we'll have to disagree.
Yeah, I will disagree with that. I'm not happy. It seems like there was a little procedural sleight of hand made, in my opinion. General fund reserve or other enterprise fund funding should be off the table. That was a direction given. The fact that there wasn't a official motion made, I think, is a way around everything that we did on that meeting. And that's just my state, I don't want to interrupt and stop the proceedings, but that's just the way I feel. I'm not comfortable with that.
And I would, not to be argumentative, but just to, again, submit that the, the idea of using, in this case, gas tax monies, as council indicated, not wanting to take away and swap those funds out, was completely removed from the discussion.
But there was no motion. Why is that removed now?
Well, because we're trying to reflect as best we can what it is that the collective direction of the council is. I mean, we look for the concurrence, or at least the, the, well, the concurrence of the City Council as to what you want to have done. It seemed unanimous, from our standpoint, that using gas tax dollars, or Mezharar dollars, or any, not Mezharar, but gas tax dollars, was completely outside the realm. If the council, as you have in, in other instances, decided to borrow from, say, the sewer fund to put this money forward because the, the general fund was off limits, we at least wanted to give you that option.
Mr. Caro.
Yeah, and for the record, I was not and would not be interested in using gas tax to fund this project. No nexus there, there's absolutely no, no connection.
Are we, are we done with the report? That's what I want to find out. Are we done with it? You've got some more?
No, I interrupted you, and I apologize.
Well, that's okay.
Just his last statement, Mr. Najarian, it wasn't our intent to scramble the eggs and try and hide it by you. We wanted to outline the fact that two of you were very clear and said, "No, we don't want to use general fund," and one said, "No, I'm willing to," with, with some kind of strategy. So that is why you have option B here.
So we'll end up seeing if there's three this time that feel the same way about no reserves, or no gas tax.
And that's the direction we're looking for.
And this way, this time, it'll be in a motion.
Can I ask a question? If we don't use those bond funds that you're suggesting debt be repaid through, what would we use that money for otherwise?
The taxable bonds? There's the tax-exempt bonds, and there's the taxable bonds that are, that are sitting to work. This scenario that Phil had outlined was the taxable bonds. So if, if we did not use those to pay debt service to generate a net new income stream to repay whatever internal borrowing, they literally would sit in abeyance and on the sideline until such time as the state either ordered us to deface those, in which case we'd be repaying debt service, or allows us to use them, in which case we would make the lump sum payment back to the city for that internal borrowing.
And that might be turn of the year.
It could be longer, sure. And that, I think that was part of Mr. Najarian's point last time, was that he did not want to count on the 2011 bonds because it was uncertain.
Yeah, yeah. We don't know when.
But if...
But, and I'm sorry, to, to Ms. Friedman's point, then, we don't have to wait for, we don't have to wait for the state to give a commandment. We can begin making those debt service payments now, unilaterally, as a Glendale Successor Agency, to generate those proceeds, to allow for that repayment, which I think is the wrinkle here. But there, again, if you recall from the last discussion, from the briefings for Mr. Sananian and Ms. Friedman, the idea being that, once you start to make that debt service payment and you erode that, that, the principal amount of those proceeds, then if the state did finally come to its senses and did unlock those bond proceeds, you now have fewer bond proceeds to act on or to act with. And so our, our hesitation was, wow, we really don't want to use those 2011 taxable bond proceeds until we're absolutely sure that the state is telling us, "No way, no how, you're not going to allow, we're not going to allow you to use those monies." It has to sit in limbo. And so the idea of either borrowing internally from some source really was what would give us some degree of time, but still allow the project to move forward.
In funding option B, the pros of that are, we could use existing resources to fully fund the project. The council would maintain control over the repayment of that, as was just outlined. You can make the decision to use those proceeds today to make that repayment and generate that positive cash of 735. And then other funds and projects, the gas tax and the, the Paseo parking lot are unaffected. On the downside, it does require an internal borrowing, and, and as we've talked about here today, there is, is some trepidation to do that. If the general fund reserve were to be the source of that, it would bring the balance below the, the ceiling target of 35%. GAAP does not allow us to book this as a loan, so it would be an expenditure, and then as you replenished, you would, you would realize those addition, additional revenue to that fund. And the repayment has to be made over time, probably five to seven years. The third option, which was, there was a suggestion to ask the community to contribute to the, the project, in the form of a gas ta, I'm sorry, a parcel tax or general obligation bond. In June of 14, we have an election. We could ask the community two questions. Would you be willing to, to pay X number of dollars for a facility? Would you be willing to pay X number of dollars for ongoing library services? We could even ask if they would be willing to pay X dollars for both. There are differing success rates on those, and there's different types that you can. The two most, mostly used are a parcel tax. That's where you have the same formula according to a particular type of parcel. Single-family homes, all single-family homes, whether they were worth a dollar or $100 million, would pay the same amount, $10, $15, whatever it is. All single-family home parcels would pay the same amount. All commercial parcels would pay the same amount. With a general obligation bond, you have the same formula, but it varies because it's then takes into account the value of the property. So if you have something worth $100, you'd pay a dollar at 1%. If it's $1,000, you'd pay $100, and, based on the value.
Generally at $100,000 worth of assessed value.
We have looked at, the library staff has looked at the success rate of asking the community to participate. When it is for a facility only, their success, the success rate of these types is about 66%. When it's services only, that drops to 56%. When you ask the community to fund both, it drops to about 33%. Now, we've done some quick calculations. We think that any kind of, of assessment that you would have would be a nominal per parcel. There is 43,522 parcels in the city of Glendale. For that $5 million, you could repay it in one year with, just straight across the board, $114 on each parcel. That would generate $5 million, and you could repay that. You could, you could ask for an assessment of a little over $200 per year on a parcel, and you could fund the entire library's budget. You would then have that money to, to put back to some other general service, first to replenish whatever fund you, you borrowed from, if you were to do that.
Mr. Lanza-Fame, sorry, how much would it cost to put this on the ballot?
We've got an estimate somewhere between $30,000 and $200,000. The reason for it is depending on how big a campaign you want to mount. Do you want to go out and survey the community first? Do you want to do marketing to, to promote one position or the other? So it really does depend, but I think minimally, if you just put it on there with something drafted up by a staff or the city attorney's office, here's the pros and cons of this, and you ask probably about $30,000 to $50,000.
For June 2014, you're sort of talking about a poll-like question? Are you actually talking about a vote up or down?
We would do a vote up or down. As, as you know, in the citizen satisfaction survey that's being conducted even as we speak, one of the questions that is asked is, would residents support a parcel tax, I don't know if it's a parcel tax or just a tax, to support an augmentation of, of library services and buildings? And so we are awaiting the results of, of that survey, so we would be a lot smarter as we go.
I mean, we could, we could structure this a lot of different ways. You could generate a million dollars a year over five years, and the assessment would be $23 a parcel, less than $2 a, a month. So we could make it however we want to structure it, whether it's just for this facility or ongoing for, to augment library services. That would be a decision that we would, if this is the route you want to take, we would ask you for some direction on that.
So if we went to the state, decided on the 2011 bonds, it could be anywhere between January and June of 2014, right? Just about the same time it would take to get this on the ballot and hopefully pass it, so...
Or longer.
Better than the other.
Or, or longer, and, and based on the feedback we received at Independent Cities Association, it sounds like it probably will be longer. I think that the, the more likely question is whether or not the City Council, as Successor Agency, would want to start making debt service payments on those bonds to generate the $735,000 in net new property tax proceeds.
$735 takes care of all the money we need?
Well, $735 a year over 10 years is $7.35 million, when we're looking at, at five. But again, we urge caution because if, again, if the state were to come to its senses and allow us to draw on those resources, we've just, you know, chewed off our foot to get out of the trap, essentially.
You can chew it a little bit at a time. You'd make that decision every year, but, but the point is that you would erode that, that principle. Some of the benefits of, of this strategy, it voids the need for an internal borrowing, and we maintain that policy target on a reserve, or we don't tap into other fund. It does engage the community in determining the library that they want to see in Glendale. The funding repayment, while we think that the council has control over the repayment in option B, this would be confirmed through property tax. And then again, it, it does not affect other funds or, or projects. On the downside, there's a delay 12 to 14 months, and we would see some increase in project costs due to labor and materials. And then, lastly, if, I think there's one shot to go to the community and say, "What do you want to do?" If you did ask facility only, it may forego their contribution for services on an ongoing basis. But those are, those are kind of the pros and cons for C. Staff's recommendation, for the reasons given here, is that we do an internal borrowing. We do have a large reserve that we could put to work. The key is, though, making sure that there is discipline in replenishing that. The project stays on track. There is, the council controls the repayment through the use of those 2011 bonds. It avoids inflation and increasing costs. At, at the end of the day, though, staff would ask you, and even with this recommendation, we would ask the, the council the question, "Do you think we have the financial capability to utilize an internal borrowing? If you don't, then you shouldn't, we shouldn't go down this road. If you do think that we either have an enterprise fund that's strong enough, or that the general fund can support this loan with this repayment strategy, then we would recommend you go forward at this time." So that concludes staff's presentation. We would, we have the whole team, the director of libraries, city engineer, finance director, if you have questions on any of the options, and then we'd await your direction.
Are there any questions now? I do have cards.
Go ahead.
Do you hear that? Public first?
Sure, please, absolutely.
Okay, two speakers, three minutes each. Harvey Pearson, followed by Herbert Malano.
Sheriff, council members, I'm Harvey Pearson. If the community vote was good enough to decide the fate of the land where the Americana brand now resides, it seems to me that a community vote would be good enough to decide what might happen to the Glendale Central Library. And as far as the inflation input, I remember the, I think there was a debate for years, the Adult Recreation Center, and it's not like the city's financial status went down the drain while they waited to decide when exactly they were going to do the Adult Recreation Center. And as far as, I was just noticing, the facilities versus the library services, facility seems to do better, services doesn't seem to do so well. Well, maybe that would depend on what facilities you're talking about versus what services you're talking about. you're talking about. Like the community, community might support, let's say seismic upgrades, putting in a new carpet, et cetera. You tell them you're going to put in two new entrances and get rid of the, for the public, the current entrance where the tree is, the nice tree and everything, they might say, well, we could live without that. And as far as services, if you tell, if the community, it's on, let's say, the ballot in June 2014, that if you vote for this, we will get rid of the so-called city holidays and we'll start opening on Saturdays like they do in Los Angeles, you'd probably get even better than 60% saying yes, let's do that. So it would seem like if, you know, you have, you break down the facilities and exactly what you're talking about and let community vote on that and exactly what services you're talking about and hopefully let the community vote on that. I would mention that in Los Angeles, they had a major ill, it passed tremendously, even though both newspapers, Los Angeles Times and Daily News were against it. People wanted, they voted it in. You could even call it major ill in Glendale because obviously the ill means library.
Thank you. Herbert Malano?
Members of the city council, my name is Herbert Malano. As all of you know, I'm a strong proponent of supporting the libraries and these projects. But I wonder if this particular action is going to really truly increase the availability and the use of the library, which should be the measure by which you do any of these projects. It would be, this is an action that I think is super derogatory. It's nice to have, but not absolutely necessary to have. What would be the worst thing that can happen if you don't do anything? The air conditioning units may need to be upgraded perhaps? I'm not too sure. If we were to do nothing, what's the worst that could happen? I know it's done so that you could have a facility to be able to have the passeo and remove those air conditioning box outside the library. But I'm really concerned about spending $10 million at a time when our finances are constrained and you're trying to figure out a way of financing something that is not truly necessary. I'm also concerned about the way it is being funded. Gas tax, there are two kinds. You've got gasoline sales tax, you cannot use it, it's against Proposition 42. It's an excise tax, you cannot use that either because it's against the constitution too. So I don't know how in the world this thing, this gas tax can be even an option. You cannot use it for that. You've got to use it for the transportation or roads. All right, so the general obligation bond, you want to put us into more debt. A parcel tax with a 2/3 requirement, maybe it will pass if there is no opposition. I will oppose it. I don't want any more additional taxation, especially not when there are very significant things in the city that need to be done. I'm a strong proponent of libraries and expanding the hours and making it accessible for families and children and Saturday hours. But I've seen that libraries budget remain fairly stagnant in the last few years. We had a little bit of an increase in the last 12 years, but nothing compared to what we spent on police and fire. It is, it's an important issue for you to look at a graph of the actual library expenditures for the last 12, 13 years and see the growth compared to the other departments. So again, I am in favor of having us expand the library services, but not through a $10 million, you know, bond issue or worse, taking it out of the reserves. What are we doing in case of an earthquake? And you're really constrained for funds in all kinds of situations. You know, I think that those funds should be reserved for what it truly is, a true reserve in case of an emergency. What is really needed, subterranean parking. It could be revenue producing. It could allow you for actually to perhaps even justify a bond based upon that opportunity and it increases the level of accessibility of the library for many patrons. Let's increase the use of the libraries. Let's expand the hours. Let's restore the staffing needed to maintain this library open to the general public. But I think that we should wait until our finances are in much better shape for you to do something that looks very nice on paper and will probably enhance the city significantly, but it's not needed.
Okay, that's my last card. Comments, Mr. Cantaro?
We have some questions. Well, first of all, the gas tax is off the table, correct?
That's true and it was never actually gas tax. It was a swap of funds that would ultimately allow for a shift, but that notwithstanding, no, it's not gas tax.
Okay, so my first question, so the Paseo Laten project, that is continuing? We're moving forward with that? Because to me, that is very, very important. I mean, that literally will give us more green space in the downtown that's going to funnel people to the library, make it a more active site. Now, when you talk about enterprise funds, which enterprise funds do you have in mind?
The one that would be most likely would be the sewer fund. We hold at this point the largest fund balance there and we need to in case LA city ever wanted us to buy them out of LagWIP.
Oh boy, that's been around forever, yeah.
It has been, but at the same time, you're carrying a 35% undesignated general fund reserve balance of about $59 million. So if you borrowed from sewer and LagWIP did get called as an emergency, you still have the capacity to use general fund reserve for that.
And how much are you talking about? About $5 million?
Yes, sir.
Altogether? Okay. And then the bonds or the bonds that are there?
The tax exempt bond proceeds of $10 million are there.
Okay, how many parcels did you say?
Forty-three thousand.
Forty-three, five twenty-two.
Forty-three, five twenty-two.
Including yours.
All right, well, generally speaking, I am for option B. I think we can do it. I think the economy is in much better shape. We've certainly bottomed out. I think all indications are we're going to continue to receive more funding as, as the years go on. I think the state has kind of taken the final bite and they weren't just bites, they were, they were big bites, but I think that is going to be tapering off. So I think the city's finances are going to be much improved in the, in the coming years. We still have a way to go, I agree, but we're certainly not headed in this trajectory anymore. So I think this is a project worth doing. We can scale it back as much as we possibly can. I think the library director understands that and other people in the city. But I'm for proceeding and doing something. The library needs to be revitalized and certainly used by all segments of the population. I think it's a key element in our entire downtown plan, so I'm for moving forward. And I don't particularly like the idea of going to, in June, I don't like the idea of going to the public and asking them for money. Don't think we, we need to do that.
Okay, next, Mr. Sanani.
Yeah, as if this isn't a complicated enough issue, I have an element to add to this. No, it's my understanding that approximately 10 years or maybe more ago, the city council committed to designating a room in the central library to genocides and mansing humanity to men. And from what I understand, within the, within the context of this rehab, it's not really going to require any additional money to finally get that, get that done. I mean, it's either now or never because it's not like we're going to have another rehab project coming up in five years, hopefully not. But inexplicably, this, this project doesn't include that from what I understand.
Can I ask Madam Librarian?
I would defer to this in the clarity on that side.
Actually, that's a very good question. We are in the midst of looking at our special collections room and the special collections room currently houses our Glendale history, some California history and some what we call the cat collection. We've got the largest cat collection other than Yale University, believe it or not. But it doesn't make sense to have a cat collection in Glendale because really nobody's using it and so that's going to be deaccessioned. So what, as far as Glendale history is concerned, the collection is really focused on the early, well, the late 1800s up to maybe 1960. But what we really want to do with that collection is expand it. And so what I'd like to do with the collection is really focus on our new communities, our immigrant communities and the history of our immigrant communities in Glendale. So that's, that's part one of what I want to say. Part two is, as far as the advisory committee that recommended the, the room be dedicated to, to the genocide or various genocide, yeah, that was a recommendation. We came forward to council with the funding recommendation and unfortunately, we didn't have the funding at the time. But what we were able to do is create a genocide collection that it's not in a room, but it's in a section of the library. So what we, we would like to do and what we could do is use that as a jumping, a jump off to further developing a collection that not only would focus on genocide, but would focus on all our communities in Glendale. And so in the current plan, we have some enhancements to the special collections room. We also have a space in the main floor that's now our literacy offices that we, we still haven't quite figured out what to do with that. So, you know, we could either use the special collections room or that space or another space to bring the genocide collection, rename the special collections room to, to focus on Glendale history and, you know, a memorial to genocide. So we're, we're in the in-between and betwixt phase, but it's definitely something that we're, we're thinking of.
So there is no general physical plan of the rehabilitated facility that's in existence? I mean, or, okay, answer the, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, the special collections room is where.
It would be it.
Something like that.
Would be it, okay.
Or in this other space that we're looking at several different options. So it, it would just depend on the capacity of whatever collection we decide to move forward with. But I, but I do, you know, we really did look very hard in 2000, I think it was 2001, at the possibility of a room, but it became a funding option. It also became a room space capacity issue. But we have invested a lot of funds in building that collection. It's just not in a room named as such, it's on, in a section of the library.
It's all a space allocation jigsaw puzzle to find out how you can work within the confines of the space you have.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I just wish there was some finality to the issue before we took a vote on it. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Whether you do the project now or you do the project in a year from now, the takeaway that, that I have from looking at the building plans is that as we consolidate the administrative functions on one end of the upstairs, you have the capacity to do what you want to do as, as a council with whatever the, the collection may be, in this case, if it's the Armenian genocide to follow through on.
I think it's all genocides, it's a.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But even to the extent of the, the larger immigrant experience, the different immigrant populations and then the stories that go with those various populations, be they Armenian, Korean, Latino, whatever the case may be, the space won't be an issue, I think, is at the end of the day, the takeaway for us.
Let me ask a question on that. I haven't seen the plans, obviously. But if we move the entrance, the library to the north side rather than the east, does the east side go away? Is that an emergency exit?
That would be a staff entrance and an emergency exit and an exit when we have events in our auditorium. Exit and entrance.
It would seem like there'd be additional space in that area.
Yeah, no, we definitely, as I said, and let me stress, we really want to focus more on our special collections that would include what you're talking about.
Moving a wall out or something, you would need all, all that entry space on that side.
No, I mean, and the, well, I mean, the other thing that we've been doing over the years and one of the things that we're accomplishing in the, in the remodel is creating more space because we downsized the book collection. I mean, we're going electronic, that's the way the world is going. That's not to say we're going to, to eliminate the book collection, but it has been downsized and that's given us more capacity for other things like computer labs, conference rooms, more room for special collections. So that is definitely a goal of the project. And one of our strategic priorities, as I said, are our special collections.
Answer your question.
Sort of.
Sort of, yeah.
Look, I personally, I mean, I've been waiting for a long time since I was obviously part of the decision-making. I mean, it's time to do it and this is the time to do it. With everything that's going on in the library, all of the changes, let's designate a room or designate a, a section, but let's go ahead and do it. This is the opportunity, not, there's no more research to be done. I mean, physically, whatever is appropriate in terms of the space, but let's physically designate a space at the central library for this issue.
And I am 100% behind that.
Yeah, I think that's what staff is trying to do, reallocate the space within the walls of the library.
I mean, it's really, we have a genocide collection and it is based on the UN definition. It's just a matter of putting it into a space and calling it that.
And that's the gist of the issue because the collection's there, but it's sort of languishing in an undesigned spot. So if we don't make that move now, if it's not, the, the space isn't designated right now for it, then God knows when it's going to happen.
And, and maybe I didn't make myself clear. The space would be the special collections room. It would not be called the special collections room anymore, but I would want that space to incorporate what it is right now, Glendale history and then whatever we decide to name the genocide collection or some kind of commemoration of the genocide and also the immigrant community in our, in our city.
Well, you, you have a.
History of that immigrant.
You have a library that's three stories, right?
Yeah.
You have downstairs where very few people see.
Right.
Where offices are. So there's space to play with, it's just figuring it all out and I guess you're not there yet.
So, and, and I'll also add that in 2001, the recommendation was to have an advisory committee that would help the library decide on the name of the room and decide, you know, the scope of the collection and, and that's what we can move forward with. And we did as much as we could at the time.
You know, not at the risk of additional expense to the city, that's what worries me about the advisory committee and all that. And especially with, specifically with the Armenian genocide issue, I mean, the centennial is coming up in two years, so you set up another committee, it takes another three, four years just coming up with a name for the wrong collection or for the room. That would be, that would not be helpful.
I think the obstacles of space and funding as part of this project, again, whether it's today or next year, evaporate with respect to that issue.
They don't need a committee.
Follow-up question. Now, when I hear Dave Weaver say he hasn't seen the plan for the project.
Well, Mr. Ochoa said.
Is there, is there a plan?
There are, there's a building program. We are working on plans now when, and, and let me, actually, I should have said this at the very beginning, I apologize. It goes back to Mr. Najarian's comment about this item coming first and then here we are again. The reason why this discussion happened last month when it did, when two members were gone, is because we were chasing new market tax credits. And the timeline was such that we needed direction as soon as we possibly could. Part of that, that pursuit of new market tax credits money is that free money, such as it were, for the $5 million, we had to have our, our building program well underway, which Public Works is, is working through now, but it was going at a, at a, really a breakneck pace. Because the use of, of new market tax credits would have prevented us from using the 2010 tax exempt bond proceeds, the need for funding from the city, either from swapping out other funds that ultimately would have been subsidized by gas tax monies or offset by value of gas tax monies, or it would have been from general fund reserve or from somewhere else, that was all part of that discussion that happened last month. Because, again, council was adamant about not going after other programs and because the amount of money was so very significant that we would have to take from the city, we just let that, that fall away because it wasn't worth the $5 million that we were chasing for everything else we were having to do. So the plus side of having gone through that exercise of pursuing new market tax credits is, and Mr. Galanian can answer your questions if you have them about the actual plans, we have gone very deep into the, the development process. Where are we right now, Rubik, in, in terms of your shop's review?
Can we see them?
It's the can we see them part that I'm more worried about because I know that we're talking about the, the financing scheme for the rehabilitation project, but it seems like it's a, it's an amount certain almost, right? I mean, we have a ballpark understanding of what that amount is going to be. I mean, shouldn't we see really why we're agreeing to designate certain funds or certain mechanisms for coming up for funds?
We know it's preliminary.
Right, right.
Inseparable, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sanani and Mr. Ochoa, the plans for mechanical, electrical and plumbing are 100% complete.
Don't need those.
And they have been at least through one set of plan check. Currently, we're working on the structural and seismic upgrades that are at a 50% stage. And there are some architectural modifications that had to be done to the architectural plans to accommodate the seismic upgrades.
You have the architectural plans.
We have a conceptual design that was presented to council, I believe in March.
For internal?
Yes.
Configurations?
But we have more details if you, if you please.
I think that's what we're talking about, seeing. Don't need us, we don't need to read the structural drawings. Don't need this, we don't need to read the structural drawings, the electrical, the plumbing, seismic drawings, it's conceptual layout of spaces and stuff.
Exactly, yeah. So we know what it is that we're...
Yeah, we have the completed and finalized layout plan.
And we're scratching our heads, saying, how is it that we have not circulated those to you, sir? We did that with council in March.
How refreshing.
We're saying, how did we not do it? But it was in March.
Can we...
Most definitely we can, the straight answer is yes.
I forget already. Sorry.
No, that's it. I mean, I just, you know, we're going to vote on, again, funding, or way of funding something, I would like to know what it is.
That's fair. So what, have I...
Otherwise, I, you know, I agree with, it's not, I've spent a lot of time at the library when I was especially in high school, I lived in an apartment unit, it provided good atmosphere, an academic place, full of things you could read, where you could study, you could actually study. And like our speaker said, our funding for libraries has been anemic for a long time, for understandable reasons, but that's unfortunate, so. Can help the libraries move forward, we should.
Mr. Nagerian, and Ms. Friedman.
I just have a question for Mr. Ochoa. I think Mr. Lanzepin had said that option B is something that we should consider if we feel that we have the funds to do so. So you, as our city manager and keeper of those funds, what is your opinion? Do we have those funds? Do you feel comfortable with that scenario?
Our recommendation, my recommendation, is for option B. I do feel comfortable, if only because we have the insurance that we could use the bond proceeds from 2011 to repay the debt service, to generate net new funds, to repay the city. So, absent that type of insurance, I probably wouldn't feel as comfortable, and I wouldn't feel comfortable at all in making that recommendation. But because we have that ability, we feel comfortable in making that recommendation to you, ma'am.
Well, my feeling is, I support option B. This is a large capital project, and it's rare that you just have the change lying around for a large capital project. I think no matter what, you're looking at a situation where you're going to be using reserves, or using bond funds, for any large capital project, so I don't think that that's inappropriate or irresponsible. I understand that, given the recession, there's some amount of, you know, concern amongst my colleagues, and I appreciate that, I think that's correct to have that, but at the same time, the central library in particular is a huge resource for that area, it's used for a lot of things by a lot of people. I've spoken to Ms. Cleary about this several times, and she feels, not only excited about this project, but she feels that it's really necessary for this library to fulfill its highest and best use, and be something that's really usable by the community. So, I'm, you know, do you think that this is something that's going to be a huge amenity? I want to keep looking at those designs, this is a very historically important building. I like where the design is going, but I sort of worry about that entryway being more modernist, and not, rather than brutalist, so I think we need to have an expert in that particular style of architecture take a look at this. But conceptually, I think it's a great start, and I think having that big stairway entrance into the library, even though it's not exactly in the style of the architecture, will certainly be something that the community will welcome. I have gone to that library many times, and that side entrance leads to problems in terms of people lingering, because it's not very visible from the street. I think this will help solve that, and as Mr. Quintero said, the rear of it becoming green space, becoming incorporated into Central Park more, will also bring that whole plaza together, and reorienting that entrance, so that our Central Park has that entrance to the Adult Recreation Center, our new memorials, and then to the library, a better access will make that a lot more usable, and also that flow in and out of the library into the park. So I look forward to seeing that design as well. So I do support option B.
Mr. Najarian?
I am definitely against option B, both on the merits, as well as the procedure in which option B was brought to us a second time, after a majority of the council spoke on it. But I think, important to note, is that today is the day that the chickens have come home to roost. The chickens that I'm talking about are the forgone park and library impact fees that I fought like hell, like hell, to place at the appropriate limit, four years ago, perhaps five years ago, before the 2,000 units were being built. We set that at a level approximately half of what they should have been set at. We set them at, what, 10,000 a unit? Something like that?
That's lower than, the initial was in the 3,500 range.
Ouch, right. And we gave them these leeways, and Dr. J came in for an exemption, and at the end, it still was less than the approximate $17,000 per unit that our consultant, how much, 14? That our consultant said, sure, it wasn't 17?
Total combined was 14 and change.
So, we, as a council, in an effort to absorb some of the costs that the city would bear by the addition of the 4,000 or 5,000 new residents downtown, are now faced with this problem. We have a shortage of money for a very important component of our quality of life, and that is our library. So today is the day, you know, four years ago, five years ago, I was vocal, but I was not able to sway my colleagues. Today is the day that had those funds been collected at the appropriate level recommended by our consultant, we would be, if not totally funded, we'd be much closer to having a full funding, or the, we're looking at a $5 million gap. The $10 million bond funds are there, we can use those, correct? Without any, without any issue. The 10 million, 2010 bonds are there. So I'm very, I guess I'm disappointed that today, we're really feeling the true impact. It's not an academic question anymore, but it is a true time for us to make decisions to how we're going to backfill that money. Why isn't option D, an increase of our parks and library impact fees to a level which accurately reflect the impact of new units on the city? I think that there's still, despite everyone's concern, there's no more building going on, there is still plenty of activity, plenty of folks talking about making huge, large investments and construction projects in the downtown. So I think today is the day to do it, to immediately get going on this. They're talking about the whole entire block where Citibank is, being raised, and putting many hundred units. We have to adjust those fees, because this is what happens. We have huge demands on our aging infrastructure that need to be upgraded, and this is the way to do it. Not Grandma Jones to be hit with a parcel tax who never goes to the library, this is what we should do. And I will not approve any additional funding unless the council addresses the increase of those impact fees. I don't think anyone can say that the fees are too high at the current level, and I don't think anyone can say that the additional units are not creating an impact on our parks and on our libraries. So I hope we can see clear and do the right thing today.
I'd back you up on that, bringing it back.
Yeah, I'm prepared to bring the fees back.
Why don't we agendize that?
Okay, I'm still rolling here.
Yeah, because I haven't asked if there's a motion or desire to do that yet, so go on, continue, continue, Mr. Najarian.
I do want to note that, as we're all, with all due respect to Ms. Cleary, and the library staff, as we're talking about, as we're singing the blues for the library, let us not forget that currently, the Brand Library is undergoing a huge renovation, at the cost of $10 million. Okay, so let's, let's not say this is, you know, a department that is being trod on, it is perhaps somewhat behind in other funding issues, but it's getting a heck of a great makeover of a, what was described as a important piece, and it was underutilized, and all these words that we're talking about, the central library, were used towards Brand Library, and we got up and we funded that, and it's on its way towards its completion. I would support postponing option A, this project, until we can get a clearer source of funding, or reduce the overall budget of this from 15 million to 10 million. 10 million is not anything to sneeze at. And in that, in my view, in any renovation of a library, should be a dedicated room, not just a corner of a special, former special collections room, to meet the intent of the city back in 2001, when we went through some very trying and emotional times regarding the lowering of the flag for the Armenian genocide, creation of the Armenian genocide commemoration, and Man's Inhumanity to Man. I think that anything, if we do anything, we're going to have to dedicate a specific room. So, in conclusion, and in summary, we have to increase our park and library impact fees. We need to postpone this until that can be done, or create a budget that would fit within the 2010 bonds availability, which is $10 million. Thank you, Mr. Nagerian.
Okay. As for me, I don't know where on God's green earth this high priority project materialized. I haven't got letters, emails, I haven't seen tremendous articles written on it, I haven't seen crowds coming down here, and, well, you've got to spend $15 million on the library. That's why I'm going to end up the conclusion of option A. Materials cost, yes, will go up some, they're not going to go through the roof. I would do the seismic, because we could have that major earthquake tomorrow, so why not do the seismic? I don't see the, want to see the project scaled back, you do it right, because it's going to be there for generations of Glendaleans to come, so do it the right way. Think we send the wrong message if we tell the people of this community, we're going to spend $15 million on a library, and I bet you a lot of them say, why? You can't do this for us, you can't do that for us, you can't put in more parks, why are you spending $15 million on a library when people are using it all the time as it is now? What do I tell them? I haven't seen any plans that I can recall, that I can recall. And I was up at the Brand Library today, boy, is that going to be a beautiful structure. We've got to market that all over Hollywood, I can see tour buses coming up there, giving great tours on the history of a 1902 house, whatever. Oh, what? Oh, four, 1904 house. The ceiling, the paintings up on the ceiling, all recreating what was there when Mr. Brand built the house, it's something else. But I think librarians waited 10 years to get it. They didn't get it the first year they wanted to do it, they've waited 10 years to get it, and it's going to be worth the wait. Impact fees, I think, if I'm not wrong, you couldn't persuade me, Mr. Najarian, but it was, I think the fact I stand ready to be corrected, we weren't getting any building in Glendale, nothing was happening. And we were afraid if we put all these high impact fees on, we'd lose the beginning of some building in Glendale. Well, look what's happened now in the last few years, with low interest rates, favorable borrowing of money, all by private sector, 2,000 units being built, it's different times than then. Yeah, I concur. But on, let's look at the impact fees again. It's a different day, we are looking at the impact fees. And as far as I'm concerned, that is not a historic building. I was in the historic library, there's now a six, seven, eight-story apartment building sitting on the library that I used to study in when I was in high school, and at USC. I remember, that was the historic one, we tore it down to put housing in. It is a different kind, I, this is now historic building, I am really getting old, Mr. Quintero, really old. So, I don't care to borrow money, I don't care to look at anything now, I'm willing to wait the six, eight months, find out. I just don't want to do anything else. So, I'm going to stay with measure A for now, I want it done, I'm willing to wait six minutes, I'll revisit again, if it goes that way. Look at it in January, you'll still be here, Mr. Quintero, look at it again, and see if the landscape is any different in terms of funding and revenue, whatever.
Okay, well, I don't see any motions, but I'm prepared...
Wait up, Sedani, have you taken a position on anything? Or do you...
I want to move forward, but again, I'm very wary of moving forward without some commitment as designation, so...
Somebody make a motion on whatever.
And there is a motion, Mr. Quintero, but you can make the motions based on what the staff has presented on the topic.
Move option A, B, or C, or D.
I move option B. And I move option B with the commitment and a plan to set aside space at the central library, a dedicated space at the central library to recognize Man's Inhumanity to Man.
I think any of the options would have that in there.
The next time it's in front of us, there will be a space on the plans.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aiden, discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers, Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Caro?
Yes.
Sedani?
Yes.
Dave Weaver?
No.
And then how do we agendize bringing back a discussion about the impact fees?
You just did, I mean, I made the point, and we'll...
All five of us concur.
Does that come in front of a joint meeting, or housing?
It would probably just come before...
Now, that won't affect any of the 2,000 units currently being built, right? Impact fees adjusted, wouldn't affect anybody.
Anybody who has their entitlements.
Right.
They've all got their entitlements, so it'll be something new on the horizon.
Generally, they're paid at building permit time?
Right.
So if anybody that hasn't yet pulled their permit...
Right, it certainly wouldn't apply to anybody who's got a vested right to build, but after that, it's a policy called by the council, how to impose them.
Okay.
And out of curiosity, what are the current fees?
Currently, it's $7,000 per unit, and it is scheduled to go up to $10,500 per unit in January 1st.
So $7,000 per unit currently, January 1st, it goes up to 10.5. So 2,000 times 7,000, how much have we received to date, or will receive to date? Somebody do the math, 7 times 2, 1,400,000?
Bob Elliott.
About 4,000,000.
About 1,000,000.
A portion between parks and parks.
Library and parks, right. The line share, that is, the parks' impact fee, and a much smaller portion is for library.
Okay. No other business? entertain a motion to resign for the council?
So moved.
Second. Stand adjourned for the council, for the successor agency.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we stand adjourned at floor 45.